Okay, it's 6:37. I'd like to call this meeting of the Marvin Planning Board to order. And we have four members either here or online. That would be myself, Kelly Cates, Melinda Daniel, and Kent Renner.
Renner.
Renner, okay. So we do have four. And I don't know what people can hear. Donnie, can you hear me okay with this mask on? Okay. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the agenda as presented?
The agenda at least, just the agenda?
I just don't know where it is. There were like five email inbox. There are five emails in my inbox and I was here like CUPs and attachments. So I actually found the agenda with everything consolidated in there.
You want to send it through real quick or something?
I can't, well, I can't do it from here. Kelly, if you go on the website and you check under agendas and minutes, the packet will be there.
Alright, did it get emailed out?
It did, it did. I can check the date for it if you want, try to search your inbox for it.
I can also just put it in the chat.
That would be good.
Try to put it in the chat. So agendas and minutes, 2020.
You're on that website, go down. You're in council.
Okay, 2020 agenda packet.
We're in council.
Is it going down?
No, actually, sorry, scroll up. Go to Planning Board.
Where?
Government, up there at the top.
Okay, government.
Planning Board.
Planning Board.
There you go, agendas and minutes. Don't you hate the current website?
Yes?
9/16.
9/16.
So he's gonna send a link out in the chat for everybody.
Yep.
Hmm.
Okay, alright.
Did it come from the Marvin Planner?
No, I usually...
Usually comes from, usually comes from me.
From the clerk.
Oh, clerk, that might be why I'm not finding it.
Sorry to help. I put it in the chat, I put the link in the chat. So you can just click that and open it up.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, so we'll give you a second to review that.
Yeah, we should definitely consolidate our emails whenever possible.
That's fine, I'm just, we'll get together on that.
Yeah, we need to get in touch. Good point.
Kent, did you have a chance to look at it? Okay. While Kelly's looking, does anybody else have any comments regarding the agenda?
No.
No? Let me know whenever you've had a chance, Kelly.
I'm good, I had already done most of this, so.
Okay, alright, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Alright.
Is that Melinda?
Yep.
Melinda, any discussion?
Who's gonna second?
Oh, I need a second, I'm sorry, thank you.
Kelly's seconding.
Okay, Kelly. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, I think I heard a aye from Kent.
Yeah, I heard that too.
Okay, thank you. And we have adoption of the meeting minutes for our last meeting of 8/18/20. Any comments regarding those? Any changes, additions? Hearing no. I would make a motion to adopt the minutes as presented.
You making that motion?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, any second?
Second.
Melinda's second.
Melinda?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, Kent? Was that, gotta hear from Kent.
Yeah, aye.
Okay, thank you. Then the minutes from the 8/18 meeting are adopted. We have public comment period?
And these people are here for their respective pool applications, so please hold your comments until we get to the topic. Is there anyone that wants to make a general public comment in the virtual audience? I think only one person is here that does not have a pool, so.
Okay. Hearing no, having no public comment, I'll close the public comment period. So moving to items of discussion. We have a conditional use permit application 20-12510 for 3,000 Rocky Hollow Drive. It's a pool in a rear yard that abuts a side yard.
Okay, so this, give me a second to screen share also. Alright, so we have here a pool application in a rear yard that abuts a side yard. It looks a little bit different, but the, like, on paper, that's a side yard of the neighbor on Meadow Vista Drive. We have the applicant here today as well to speak on that. It's, the application's also in the packet. Let's see. They'll be installing a lot of landscaping. It looks to be plenty within, plenty over 90% opacity. There's also 62 feet from the pool to the rear yard line. And the applicant is here and they can make some additional comments. You wanna make the comments or you want to me to make them? Actually, before you make the comments, can I get a consensus that the applicant, what's your full name?
Nabil Ahmad.
Nabil Ahmad can speak at the table for this application.
We'll need to see everyone's faces.
Oh, yeah. I need to see everyone's faces. Well, I can't see Kent's face, but I can move, I can move this over here. We got a thumbs up from people who are on, yep, alright.
Alright. Kent, are you good with that?
Yes.
You okay?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you a lot better than last time. Okay, so, go ahead.
So I just wanted to state that we have verbal permission for the pool. We discussed the design and the distance with our neighbor whose yard, whose side yard we abut. And they have given us verbal consent to move ahead with the construction. We also have consent from the neighbor right next to us and they have also verbally consented. And those signatures are in our HOA application. As Rubik mentioned, we have plenty of landscaping planned to screen our yard, the pool, from both the side yard and from the main road. And I think we're quite a bit of a distance away from both the side yard and our neighbor's yard. And also further, far away from Meadow Vista.
May I add something?
Yes, that is the contractor. Could also, could I get a consensus from the planning board to allow the contractor from Superior?
What's his name?
What's your name, sir?
My name is Forrest Stalderman.
For him to speak?
Yeah.
Alright, we got a thumbs up from Melinda.
Okay, so, so you have permission?
I'm sorry, it was a bad reverb. I was only going to add that not only meet and exceed all HOA expectations, but none of the neighbors are objecting to this as well. The development itself is one of the largest developments in part property size, lot sizes. So therefore, I really feel it just is almost a new point in allowing Mr. or Dr. Ma, Dr. Ma to put this in.
Yeah.
Well, that is true. The minimum distance is 20 feet and they have 62 feet in the application, so that's definitely fact.
I have one question for one of you. You have a very sense of landscaping plan, you know, attached. But what about the required fencing around?
Yes, we have a fence that's gonna go around. And that should be in our HOA application as well. But there is gonna be a fence on all three sides.
Which the state requires that.
Yeah, the state requires the fence to completely enclose the pool, including the fence and the house. That would be met?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Again, every, every expectation as far as code will be known, met, exceeded with the fence, the landscaping, the placement of the pool. And I'm gonna assure you, Dr. Ma will do more than necessary in order to secure that no one sees him in his pool or he sees someone in their backyard.
Okay. Could you, at some point between now and the council meeting, send me the landscape plan showing where the fence is going to go?
Sure, okay.
No problem.
Thank you.
We, you know, just one of the requirements we need to cover. Any questions from the board members of the applicant or his contractor?
Kelly says no, Melinda says no.
Okay.
No questions from Kent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think that covers all of our questions.
Yeah, no conditions really.
Yeah, I would say that the only condition be that prior to the council meeting that they submitted a plan showing the fence as well.
Yeah.
If you're doing, but.
What was the distance again for the setback?
62 foot, 7 inch.
Okay. So would anyone else like to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Okay, with the stated condition?
Yeah, the condition to add the fencing to the landscaping.
Yeah.
Who's, I need a second on that.
Kent?
Kent, give a second, alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so unanimous? Easy enough, I guess, thank you. You're welcome to stay or you can leave. You're, it will be presented to the.
Yeah, it will be on the council at their October 13th meeting, 6:30 PM here and virtual. Alright, see you then. Thank you.
So that's the date they need to submit the landscape plan by?
Well. Thank you. Well, plenty before that, I mean, like, a week, maybe a week and a half.
Just for the round, yeah.
To include that in the, in the packet.
Are we called up there?
Yeah, we're good, we're good, I get the deal later.
Next on the agenda is discussion of a conditional use permit 20-12513 for 3405 Bangin' Way Pool in the rear yard that abuts a side yard.
Alright, so this is an application. You know, back when we were talking about removing, or like adjusting the CUPs, you know, I had proposed maybe a distance, a minimum distance that, you know, a pool could have bought a side yard. This is really kinda where that, that, that could have been nice because this pool is 244 feet from their rear property line in the Providence Road Estates neighborhood. If I can pull up a aerial of that. Alright, so this, this is the situation. Let's see, oh, ooh, did I say stop the, okay, not that, click the wrong thing.
We're still live?
Yeah, we're still live. So this is 244 feet here and we have another like 100, 150 feet in total. There's about 400 feet, property is about five acres, did you say?
It's five acres.
Yeah, five acres. And the pool is going right up against the house, so you have that full, you know, property. There appears to already be a fence kind of corralling the immediate backyard area. I'm gonna pull that up as well. So, let's see, oh, wait, wait, there is a close-up, yes. So we have, we have a fence going around the outside, landscaping, proposed that close to, trees that close to each other. And we also have the contractor, the applicant in the audience here. If you'd like to allow, your name, sir?
Mike Stone.
Mike Stone to speak at the table?
I'm okay, anybody else?
Yep, okay. Would you like to add anything else?
I mean, much like what has already been said from the other pool applicant, we're gonna go through and do what we need to do. Obviously, there's plenty of space, distance from this property, the pool, to the other property. I was on site yesterday and that lot is totally wooded, believe it or not, too. It doesn't quite show it there. You can't even see the house behind it. I thought the homeowner was going to call in virtually, be in virtually, I don't know if that's happened or not, but once again, we will have to put a hook-up compliant fence around this project as well, tie it into the existing house. And there will be a landscaping plan done as well.
So that's the plan for the fence there?
Yeah. It's like fence.
So like fence and, fence and landscape gonna go around?
Yeah, so it's already indicated there.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board?
No.
No? Okay.
From me?
Yes?
Yeah, I heard none from me.
Oh, okay, alright, alright. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the CUP as, as written.
I'll second that.
Alright, Kent? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you.
So there's a meeting on the 16th, is that what happens?
13th.
13th of October?
With the village council, same place, on, also on virtual.
Okay, and once it gets passed out, we're?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay.
We're moving right along, aren't we?
Huh? Alright, now, now we're getting down to the meat of everything, quite honestly. Kidding. Next on the agenda, discussion and final recommendation of the 2020 land use plan.
We have an ink problem with the printer. That's supposed to be black. Anyhow, so in the, in the emails, I sent a slightly updated version, which has an updated future land use map. I'm really sorry that, you know, I noticed this after I was printing the posters, which you can see here on the wall. I saw, oh, shoot, missed a couple of things, so I reprinted it, sent it out again. And this is what we presented at the town hall meeting last night. It went over pretty well. The only public comment that I heard that required, or kinda requested a revision, was to make it clear from a previous meeting that the commercial concepts of the section on commercial in 5E, it should be clearer that those concepts should also apply to the Village Center commercial in 5D. If you guys recall, there was a time that you said, okay, these commercial concepts do apply to the commercial in Village Center. Do you recall that? That was like a few months ago.
There was conversation back and forth, you know, is it confusing that we have commercial and then we have the Village Center? And there was conversation back and forth regarding that.
Yeah, so one attendant of the town hall did get confused about that. And so I just wanted to pass on maybe like a one-line addition to either part D or part E to say that the commercial concepts in section E should apply to the commercial parts in the Village Center in part D, which I haven't added yet because obviously the town hall was yesterday.
Let's, give me a page.
Page 31, 32, 33. And I can also pull that up here because I recognize it's hard to switch back and forth sometimes. So the, the comment, ah, geez, the comment basically said, well, section E says limited development of pedestrian-oriented neighborhood scales. Does that mean Village Center is not gonna be pedestrian-oriented neighborhood scales? Because you didn't say that in part D. So that's, that's basically what the question was. And so I wanted to recommend, per that residence confusion request, somewhere adding a sentence like that, would that be, would that be acceptable? Let's see if it's missing, yeah.
That would be, what's now in E3?
Either in section D or somewhere in D or E.
I mean, well, it couldn't.
Either in, if I put it in D, it would, it would say, um, under D6.
Is, is the reference though being on page 33, E3, that's what you're referencing? Or what? Pedestrian-friendly amenities, you know, entities, et cetera.
Note that all of E should apply to the commercial uses in part D. Does that make sense?
And then?
Say that again, Rubik?
To add a section in D, perhaps on page 31 in D.4, maybe D.6, to say that, to apply the concepts in section E to the commercial uses in the Village Center.
Well, well, it couldn't be E1, that's for sure. We couldn't, you know, because that's, that's talking about Providence and Newtown.
Yeah, what, I'm a little confused as to, I mean, I understand their, their confusion, but does E really pertain to D? Because in E, there's a Publix, in D, there will be no Publix.
That's a really good point.
Yeah, I know, I don't see how we can say that, that section E, everything in E pertains to section D as well. That doesn't.
D is gonna be a lot stricter than E.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, that's, that's fair.
I, I just don't see if we can, if, if we needed to expand what's in D, add some more stuff, but I don't know.
I don't even think, actually, I'm reading the principal policies as Foster Village Center pays tribute to rural heritage, incorporates pedestrian-oriented design, neighborhood use with interconnected greenways. That may be sufficient.
I think it is.
What was their, Rubik, what was their exact concern again?
They, actually, I think it referred to when we swapped D and E. The question was exactly, did you remove the phrases pedestrian scale and neighborhood orient, or pedestrian-oriented neighborhood scale commercial in an attempt to say that the Village Center would not be pedestrian scale, et cetera? And the conversation I mentioned at that town hall was that we talked about how some of the concepts in the commercial area was relevant to the commercial uses in part D. But now I definitely hear your point. Not all of E is relevant to part D.
Yeah.
So maybe you should not add that and as it is, is actually fine.
I think.
E says, oh, sorry, go ahead, John.
No, I think we've covered it, you know, in, in D already.
Yeah, like, look at D3, create a walkable, compact core of neighborhood-friendly commercials, civic and public uses and spaces. That's not Publix.
Yeah, I think that covers it.
Yeah, I think that's, I just think that maybe they need to go back and read it.
Yeah, true. Maybe they looked at the title and said, oh, this D used to say pedestrian scale and it doesn't now. That might have been what happened.
Yeah, so you were initially suggesting revisions and now it doesn't seem like it's needed.
It doesn't seem like it's needed.
I don't think it is.
I just, I mean, it's worthwhile to bring it up.
Yeah, I agree.
Because that's what the town hall meeting was for.
I would throw out, I did, I did read it, you know, and the revised, revised one, you know, from cover to cover. You know, so I did my homework. My only two comments throughout, at least in what I saw on my screen, some of the print seems to be different than the rest in spuzzy. Now, I know that you and Laura, before you, said you were having problems working in the format as it was presented to you.
I'm glad to hear that she had issues too, because.
Yeah.
This is a very convoluted format.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's done a lot to really fix it up.
And I don't have a specific, I don't have a specific line, because it was multiple places and it might have just been the way it looked on my screen. But you could see, you know, the fonts look just teeny bit different or.
Fuzzy or different or whatever, okay.
Yeah, a little fuzzy and.
Yeah, I can go through and make sure all the, I'll go through and make sure all the fonts are the same.
Also, my, and this is nitpicking and, and I don't, but I'm proving that I read it.
Go ahead, no problem.
Oh, you fixed it. On page 36, there was a line, an underscore line in here that was in the wrong place.
Oh, yeah, I went through and made a lot of formality changes.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, thank you. No, all those kinds of things can be addressed now.
Yeah.
Hey, Rubik?
Yes.
If anyone comes back to you with that saying, I'm kinda backtracking, D6 is also very specific about scale and density. And you know me, I'm the like, gonna be the most hardcore person on this, on this board. So if answers it for me, it should answer it for other people who are skeptical about this plan.
Fair enough, thanks. I did have to reiterate multiple times that this is, the land use plan is a plan. It's not final and people were okay with, you know, finding out that we were going to do studies and traffic analysis before we go forward with, with the district. So that was good, that part of it.
And actually, I expected to hear some pushback on the possible Village Center subzones, but there was no conversation.
No pushback, no.
There was no, yeah.
There was a lot of conversation, but not on that topic.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's a good thing. It specifically made it clear that, that you see this 125 acres, but the vast majority of it is non-commercial and that would put a lot of people's concerns to rest.
The only thing, I'm gonna be honest, I haven't gotten to read this latest one. But on the map, it's, I kinda feel like I'm a broken record, but it's going back to where the official district, the district comes over across the Marvin Line. And I, I know we've talked about this and I know that it's, it's proposed or potential, but I still think it's kind of misleading that it is, or that it is definitely be considered.
Okay, yeah, I see what you're, I see what you're saying. We, we did talk about that at the last meeting and to say that all the subzones are potential, you know, I added a little asterisk down there that says, let's see if I can put this on the screen. Oh, I was tearing this screen, I should just go to it. I added an asterisk that says all subzone boundaries are subject to further study and adjustment. And so, I mean, the government, you know, we have the plan. We can't know everything that's final before we even put it on the map. So we could put it on the map now. Hearing more pushback than support, we could remove it when it comes down to implementation. That's, that's kinda where, that's where I stand with it.
Because the la, our last conversation was, we have, we don't know yet what's happening with, whether the roundabout's actually running for win. I mean, I know you guys. I mean, I know you guys are doing land swap stuff right now, but um, you know, we don't know what Odell Previs is gonna do, or at least I don't at this point. So, I, I would actually prefer to take it off and then, once we know something, have that ability to put it back on if we need to.
You, alright, you lost, you talk about the, she's, she's talking about.
TJ's property.
Okay, that, okay, alright, okay.
Yeah, not that we consider it, but like, email, we just don't know to have it on the map.
Yeah. And, and I know TJ is very strongly, you know, has a very strong opinion. Uh, and I've listened to what he said, it's, it's tempered mine some, but I'm, I'm with you Kelly, that's, that's a that's probably, in my opinion, the toughest piece of the entire map.
Yeah, well, I mean, when you don't know what's going in around it, you can't make a call, you can't make a call on, you know, I mean, Odell's had a ton of different plans that property, I mean, I'm, I don't think anyone should be determining whether or not TJ's property could be commercial or not until there's actually like a decision of spawning the trees.
But, but let's, let's, let's look at it this, you know, as far as analysis or, you know, conversation here. I would rather have it shown as it is right now and then change it back to residential than come back and try to get it, you know, tell them later, say, oh, we're gonna make this commercial or office, whatever, whatever the, the term is. You know, later, I'd rather have it up there front and then we don't, you know, we can back away from it, but it's easier that way than to, to.
To go more intense from what the land use plan says, yeah.
Yeah. Do, does that make sense?
Yeah, what did you say Rohit, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I said, um, it's, I was agreeing with John to say that it's easier to go lower intensity than what the land use plan says when it comes to implementation, than to have it residential and then go higher intensity than what the land use plan says when it comes time to it.
Okay, I mean, yeah, I just, I, I think, and it'd be, you're gonna end up having conversations, cause commercial doesn't necessarily mean light commercial.
Yeah, right, and that's, and that's perfectly fine, because this is the land use plan and not the Village Center strategic plan.
Yeah.
We get to the point of deciding what that could be, and it's a lot more digestible if we go lower intensity than what we put out in this plan than to go higher intensity, and that's kind of applicable across the board too. Um, all these places that are shown as residential in Marvin, if some overwhelming, um, reason was found to upzone it to commercial, that would be a very hard pill to swallow for a lot of people than if it was already labeled as potential commercial in the land use plan.
Okay.
And, you know, and, and then the bottom line, this is, you know, it's, it's not done yet, but this is just the land use plan. And, you know, then when we get into the real, you know, meat of the issue and the zoning and, you know, of it, then, you know, then that comes up later.
That's also why we don't have commercial and light commercial on here, we don't have, uh, we removed the residential areas from the backs of the Crane Store, White House and Robbie's property, because we know so little at this point, but we need to start somewhere, that we may as well start a little higher intensity and then go lower when it comes down to it.
You know, we're, we're not trying to push anything through for anyone, but I, I think as you said, it's easier to, to back up than it is to, to make it more intense.
Right, this isn't determining anything, this is uh, this is a plan.
Melinda, you just got a blank lady. Yeah, so I got, I have a question, so it, it strikes me though, what we're creating, and this could be because I'm green, so, so, someone feel free to call me out, but it strikes me though, then that we're kind of creating a snowball into avalanche effect where we say, oh, well, we're gonna go ahead and call it this, so that way then, you know, it's easier to do, and you know, to Kelly's point, and I, I don't, I don't know that, honestly, I don't know if I have an opinion about the specific locations, it's more of my general understanding, um, I mean, by, by that standard, right, of, oh, well, let's call this commercial, I'm not saying that we've done any of this flippantly, but then what's, why not turn the next block blue, and the next block blue, so that way then we can always step, I don't want to do that, cause right, my property's there, I'm not really interested in commercial happening across the street, but, but I don't think I understand the logic, maybe you could just walk me through again, I was saying, if, if it's a great plan for him to be able to do X, Y, or Z later, or any of these properties later, I don't know, maybe I'm, maybe I, I don't know that I bought into the subzones initially anyways, I just liked it having like a chunk of land that we're discussing something going here, but I, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
I don't even know if I'm making sense.
Yeah, I, I think I could answer your question pretty succinctly, um, the difference is that TJ's property is being discussed as commercial, whereas the properties further down the street, the idea came up and it was quickly decided by the planning board that they should not be considered for commercial, and that was that, and uh, the previses said, okay, I mean, it's okay if we're not commercial, but as long as we can get that residential allowance of, you know, twenty-one acres and help with water and sewer, whatever have you. Um, but that's, that's kinda where we're at, the previses are okay with it being residential, uh, Mr. Odell is okay with it being residential, and so they don't need to even be considered anymore for commercial.
Got it, okay.
That's where it ends, yeah.
Got it, that was the conversation just before I got here then, so that makes a lot of sense, okay, thank you.
And, you know, and, and the reason these, you know, those properties were even added there, you know, was, was the concept that it, it can become tr- some transitional development. I think the right term, right?
Yeah, some sort of residential only, but something more appropriate in a district like this, so those properties are added contingent on them being residential only.
You know, so that, so that, you know, so that we don't have the, the go back, you know, like metal or five acre parcels there on the curve and everything, and then immediately adjacent to it, we have, you know, commercial, uh, whether it be offices or whatever, or a coffee shop. You know, so that we can come in there with, and, and we started throwing around the term, the uh, conservation district. So you've got actually a total of forty-six acres in those two parcels, and let's say we put forty-six homes on,
Yeah, I'll draw, I'll try to draw it here.
Twenty acres, and then the rest of it is, is uh, park and, and buffer and green and stuff. Uh.
Is, is stuff a technical term, John?
Huh? Stuff, yes.
And stuff is a technical term?
It is. It's a, it's a.
It's an all-encompassing.
Sorry, that's my other title, smartass.
But, anyway.
Alright, move on.
Okay. Any other, you know, I went through and, you know, Rohi, you got the, the glossary and the definitions and stuff which we talked about, we needed, and that's all in here now. I, I think we have, personally, I think we have a, a finished product to, to recommend. I hope other people think that.
Rohit, did, um, did any of the other, I'm kinda surprised none of the planning, other planning board members are here tonight, did anyone send feedback on it, uh, through email?
Uh, no, I didn't get any feedback from any of the members that are not here tonight. Although Paul did send me a very long list of, um, feedback a few meetings ago, which are all addressed, so I think he's covered.
Alright, as long as he'll wait in, cause he's our, he's our watchdog.
Yeah, he, he.
Yeah, he waited in a few meetings ago and gave his, uh, like a list of about thirty different changes that were all mostly, they're all mostly grammatical and the ones that weren't, we did talk about, so he, I think, I'm pretty sure I could say that he's good. Yes, I got your, um, I got your uh, revisions as well, and I'm pretty sure they're incorporated, I don't remember exactly what they were, but I'm pretty sure they were incorporated in the uh, final.
I thought you were gonna take out the uh, definitions.
Uh, the way I understood it, that we were gonna include a glossary, which included some definitions and some, uh, some terms, like planning terms.
Yeah, I mean, I, I knew that, but like, you still have like encourage and facilitate goal in here, like kind of the more general
Yeah.
weather dictionary stuff.
Yeah, and then on the next page, which is not in the packet version, but in the version that I emailed you, I'm very sorry for that. Um, it has terms like, uh, let's see.
Yeah, pedestrian scale, land use, yeah, those are, those are actually helpful.
Yeah. Is that good?
I, I think that's a rough, you know, you know, necessary, you know, these are necessary adds to the, to the uh, to the document.
Mm-hmm, I'm starting to remember some of Kent's uh, comments now. There are several places that said in accord and it kinda didn't sound right. I don't think I've changed those, but I uh, I can change that uh, from the, you know, the version that we're submitting to council. Just a couple of places, just instead of saying in accord, just saying like related to or whatever it was. Sorry, sorry, what was that, could you repeat?
I'm just saying, as long as I have the correct English, I just had in, in that.
Okay.
Any further thoughts, conversations?
My only complaint is that, um, this is a pretty big deal to approve it, that there's only three of us here and two people are paying due, so why am I going?
Okay.
Uh, I, I just, is, when we get a, a more full consensus through email or something, so we don't have to wait till the next planning board meeting?
Um, I think that's possible, I mean, we could just ask the individual planning board members that are not here, um, just to give us me a response through email saying, is this a version that you think is fine, do you have any last comments before you send it to council?
You could vote contingent upon the receivable con- re- receipt of comments, but.
Oh, okay, I was gonna ask how we can do it.
Okay.
Was, I was checking, I was checking my emails to make sure that I didn't get any comments in the quorum check. Paul said he was just simply not attending. Um, where that ones are. Yeah, I don't have any comments from everybody else, I know Michael had a prior engagement, I'm not sure about the other two.
I would say, so if we send it to the board, or to the council, it will go for their October.
Yeah, October work session for adoption in November, so there's plenty of time.
There's plenty of time to get con- get feedback, and you'll even have another, you'll even have another planning board meeting before then.
Oh, okay, so we wouldn't go for their, their October sixth meeting?
Yeah, no, not their October thirteenth meeting, but their October twenty-somethingth meeting, which is after your next planning board meeting, so if you want, we can, you can approve it today contingent on, you know, no additional remarks from the other planning board members. Um, but you also have the next planning board meeting to get together again and see if you truly do not have any other comments before council's review at their October twenty-somethingth work session. Maybe twenty-seventh or something.
Twenty today, it's made out.
Twenty-nine, yeah, that's it.
Like to put this baby to bed.
Yeah, I, I'd like to get it, you know, as soon as we can. Not that I'm trying to pass the buck, but I think we've got.
I think, I think you, you're ready to kick the buck.
No, I'm, I just, I think we've done a good job.
It's ver- it's a very impressive piece of work.
Uh, considering where we started and the conversations that we have had.
I, I, I like the idea of, of putting a contingent on, um, no negative feedback from, um, planning board via email.
Do we need, do we need to put a, not later than date on that? So that it can officially get to the council?
You've got enough time where you probably don't need to do that, simply because you do have a planning board meeting before then.
Yeah, and you can meet then and then convey any additional, additional.
So basically, the way we, basically the way we would do it is, if you, we receive comments before the next planning board meeting, y'all can hash it out here and then take a revote. But if there's no comments received, it's gone, it's gone and it won't even be on the agenda next time.
Okay.
God bless America.
So, you, would you like me to draft the motion?
Yeah, if you would.
Okay, so, uh, we'll need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty land use plan contingent upon not receiving any comments or visions from the absent planning board members.
You said negative?
Negative comments or?
Or a change.
Negative comments. Okay, so we'll need a, we'll need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty land use plan contingent upon receiving, uh, no negative comments from the absent planning board members.
I say so moved?
There you go.
And a second, hey, I'll second this.
There you go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Wonderful, good job everyone, four years in the making, finally wrapping this up.
Thank you.
Alright.
Now Rohit, I know, since we've approved it, I may not feel comfortable saying this, um, I like the drawing that you added because of that new shed buffer, that looks really nice, I like that, yeah, that's her.
I think that should be around a hundred fifty, maybe two hundred feet, so, um, and you could fit forty-six patio homes where I've drawn it in blue.
But that, that comes later.
Yeah, yeah, that all comes later, that's, that's why I think she waited to say until after.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um.
Item four, discussion of the naming village, of the Village Center District.
Okay, so this is more so just kind of like a quick consensus item, um, because uh, Councilman Markleese is going to be presenting this concept at the next, uh, September work session to council. Um, the idea is that we've been calling this district the Village Center District for about fifteen years, and it's not even really a name. It's a district in the center of the village, it's kind of a prototype name. So the idea is to officially name Christen the district as the Marvin Heritage District, in addition to the tagline, um, that Chairman Jones co- thought of, which is called Where History Brings People Together. Um, in any case, uh, I just wanted to get the consensus of, uh, you guys, and it's, uh, it's kind of unfortunate that there are fewer members today, but uh, just a, how is that, would it be appro- would it be recommended to approve by the planning board when it's brought up at the council meeting?
Can you guys repeat it one more time?
Ah, geez, my mask is not great, sorry.
It's a fancy mask, it's, it's just not functioning.
Yeah, it's a good mask, it just really muffles my voice. Okay, so the idea is that Councilman Markleese is going to bring up at the council meeting to officially christen this district, cause district, Village Center District is like a prototype name, if you think about it. It's a district in the center of the village, it's not a, it's not really a name. Um, so to actually name the district Marvin Heritage District. And so I just wanted to see if, uh, planning board had any comments on it, or they could give consensus, just to, so when Councilman Markleese brings it up at the planning board meeting, there's a, there's some backing, um, if the planning board, uh, likes that idea. That's it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I get where he's coming from, um, and people eventually call it that, oh, people like to shorten everything, so like, what's the nickname gonna be? Um,
The Heritage District, yeah.
Does that look sense?
Yeah.
That's the way people are, that's just their.
MHD, I suppose it's gonna be, yeah.
But, you know, you know, when, when Rohit and I went to New Bern back in the spring, you know, and there, you know, all these, all these communities have this district in one form or another, you know, whether it be in New Bern or in Mount Airy and all these other places, but they also have, uh.
Will this be brought up at the next council meeting?
A, a, it is, as Rohit said, a tagline, you know, an advertising line to go along with it. And so I came up with, you know, with the tagline of where history brings people together. And we're talking about the history.
Well, I, I totally get that, it, it's just. Yeah, well, I, I totally get that, it, it's just, I think the actual name for that is fine, but. If, when you get out in front of having people name it something, like give it a name, I would go ahead and give it. You know what I mean?
I mean, do you have some better suggestion?
Do you have something, I'm crazy, you don't understand what I'm saying?
I mean, do you have a, another suggestion?
No, 'cause I just, I just wrote this for the title, I mean, I actually like the name, um, but like, you know. It's just a very formal name for a very small area of town, so.
Small but important.
It's a short name.
But, but this is really, you know, people talk about, you know, you know, the history of Marvin and stuff and, you know. And when you get outside of this area, you know, the rest of it is, is, was farmland, you know, and this, this was the center of, and the history of Marvin, yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not arguing that, John, I'm just saying, this is actually fine, I like it, I just think on top of it, it need, there needs to be like a short version of it. Um, or else people are into, forget one, and you might not like what it is.
Well, um, I'm not sure how you get it shorter than Heritage District.
No, no, I know, but, um.
Could be Marvin downtown or Marvin town center.
Or like that, you know, like people call, it's like the high street or, you know. I don't know, I'm like to the.
Yeah, like.
Linda, do you know what I'm talking about, you're talking about.
Melinda's, you know, been raising, you know, waving her hand.
So, the only thing that I'll add is what if we end up not incorporating any of the old buildings into it and we build something new in a cornfield?
Um, hopefully we don't.
Is it a heritage center event?
Wait, what?
I mean, ho- hopefully we don't do that, hopefully the crane store.
Oh, I, oh, I totally agree, but I know that at this point, you know, we don't, we don't know. So, I, I'm just asking is would it be a little ironic to call it the Heritage Center if it's all new?
Well. Well, it's where most of the history of Marvin happened.
Yeah, we, we incorporate the architectural themes and uh, you know, the, the view sheds and all of that into the buildings that we allow. And then it does look like a bunch of crane stores uh, were along this strip all along.
Yeah.
Even if the crane store, if for some reason the crane store itself never activates, we still have a bunch of things that look like the crane store along the strip. Hopefully people don't call it the strip, I see what you're saying.
Right, so, but we have no control over that, right? Didn't Mayor Polino say last night that we can no longer say like what things are built with and the siding and that sort of thing, like didn't he see that last night?
I, he, he did, but I'm pretty sure he's confusing that with the single family houses. Um, where the state has said, single family and double family houses are what you can't control the architecture for. Because we did that for Marvin Gardens and that was only four years ago, I think he, I, I'm pretty sure he was mistaken, or he might have been only talking about the residential parts of the district.
But you can control materials in the C, in a CUP, correct?
Yeah, in a CUP and in a, in a conditional district is, uh, conditional uses, which uh, we'll get to it, but I hope to propose. That all village center development will be conditional uses so that it can be reviewed by the planning board and council like these pools.
I'm reading that conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, well then I, then on that note, I support Heritage.
Okay.
Okay, great, do we need a vote, or?
Um, I think we could just get a consensus on this.
Consensus, I think.
I mean, I mean, it's.
It's mostly just to show uh, the council that the Councilman Markleese has the planning board's support for this.
Yeah, and we discussed it and everybody, we're in the.
It's up to you, I don't really think you need it, but if you wanna do one, you can.
I don't think we need it, you know, I, I just looking to you to keep me straight.
I can put in the minutes that you, that you all agreed by unanimous consent, if it is unanimous, that uh, that you recommend renaming the district.
Or a- actually officially naming it.
Calling and naming it, not renaming it.
Okay, so is that, would that be unanimous?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kent?
Kent?
Yes.
Okay.
Good, cool.
I'm suggesting an additional nickname before it wants away from you.
We, we could definitely keep that in mind as we go forward, I mean, we still have several months, several, several months to go before this hits the ground. Um, a one word nickname, let's just try to bring a storm stopped in the future.
You mean like Noda?
Yeah, Mahi.
Um.
Mahi.
I was getting fishy, you don't mean?
Nah, I think if we can, if we can continue to push the name, then it will stick, I think that.
Heritage Street.
Anyway.
Anyway, yeah, noted, noted.
Anyway. Moving on, discussion of the CPNI slash NC growth report and the recommended actions.
Okay, so this one, um, again, I, the council has already started, you know, looking through this report, you know, they like the strategic plan and they've already established a committee. Um, but this is again more so to, for the planning board, kinda like the last agenda item, to go through the report also. And kind of come to a consensus on what you guys think, the uh, the kind of, the favorability on various recommendations. And maybe uh, like a what I said, top three to top five, probably top three, most important considerations from the report. Um, so hopefully you guys all have gotten a chance to read the report and um.
Point of clarification, what are you asking them to do?
Um, I tried to be concise with this, um, what, to, to get a consensus on what the planning board thinks about various recommendations. Like, and, and to come up with maybe a top three, you know, most important recommendations. Um, to, and then, you know, so that the council can know what the planning board thinks about the CP, like a very summarized version of what the planning board thinks about this report. I guess uh, maybe, yeah.
Can I, can I actually make a, I, I think my suggestion would be to put this on the agenda for the next planning board meeting?
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah, I, I, I think we need to get the, the rest of the, you know, we are very, I won't say vocal, but uh.
Passionate.
Insightful and, and passionate members.
So, we're, we're tabling this on?
Yeah, so can we get a motion to table this?
Can I make a motion to table this until the next planning board meeting?
But everybody, please, please, and listen, I guess, you know, I read it, reread it and everything, but I didn't write down top three or five things, so I guess I need to go back and do that.
Yeah, but do you understand at least what I'm getting at, um, like, this is a fifty page report and there are a lot of good stuff in it, and there are some stuff that we're probably not gonna do.
Yeah.
Are you, are you just asking him to say, what do you guys like, and what, and what's your three favorite things?
What do you guys like, what do you guys don't like, I mean, you don't have to say your like and don't like on every single thing in the report, but like, if something stands out, like, you know, we were talking about selling the park for a good bit when the report just came out. And both the planning board and the PRG were kinda leaning no, um, so just things like that, if you guys could come up with what you think about some of those things.
I'll need a second on that motion, by the way. Melinda?
Yes, Kent?
Is there a summary of their actual big recommendation, like discussions and, I didn't say there, but I see a certain, this is.
Hmm, I think I heard like half the thing you said, could you speak like closer to your mic and slower?
Yeah, so is there a distinct list of their recommendations, like include in our summary?
Uh, I don't think there is, sorry, you just have to read the report, you could skim it probably, I mean, and only.
Read it small bits.
Yeah, third, two thirds of it is actually the report, like one third of it's just appendices, maybe more than that.
What, what's interesting is in, my, one of my comments here, even though we're on, I tell you what, now let this, this is. We have a, a motion and a second, and now we're in the conversation.
Yeah, we're in the first discussion on it.
That's fine, that's fine.
Alright, uh, it's interesting that the council has already moved on one of their recommendations, that's the strategic planning committee.
Which I still have questions about, so.
But, yeah, the other thing is that we've sort of moved on one of their recommendations as well, that is basically expanding. The heritage district now, up around the curve to include those two, you know, the residential parcels to act as buffers, because that was one of their recommendations. So, you know, that, it's interesting to, cause that wasn't even part of our conversations until this report came out.
Yeah, until around this time, I mean, which is good, because one of the main reasons we call them to help is because we don't know a lot of the things we don't know, as Mayor Polino says a lot. And they do know the, some of the things that we don't know about how to make a district like this work. And, and part of it is to make room for the types of housing that you would see in these types of districts to support, you know, the walkability and the commercialness. Um, commercial activity, um, so yeah, that's, that's why it's kind of, it's kind of cool to read the report, they also, you know, made sure to use language that. Made it sound they were just, you know, recommending these things, they're not telling us to do anything, they're recommending us to do certain things, so. That's why it would be cool if um, you guys could lend your opinions on those recommendations.
What uh, what will, so when they identify the top three to five recommendations, what, what do you plan to do with that?
Uh, take it to the council and uh, let them know what planning board's, you know, stance is on CPNI reports recommendations. I think, uh, I mean, each of the three boards are reviewing it kind of independently right now, and I don't want it to be disjointed, you know. The uh, like the actions that each board thinks that, um, there should be some sort of uh, consensus of, among all three boards, basically.
Rowan?
Yeah.
I have a feedback, um, do you, is there a way to get clarification around what the planning board's job is? With this, and then what the strategic planning board's job is? Because, as I was reading about the strategic planning process in this document. A lot of it is either things that we are mainly do as the planning board or as the um, design review board. And then other things are the strategic board informs of the, the planning, the planning, like the land use plan, but we've written down land use plan, so. It, it's very confusing as I'm reading this, so I, I just wanna know the bridge is strategic, what is gonna be doing, like what's their role, what's our role?
Yeah, that's a good point, um, in fact, since you mentioned that, it may have been uh, beneficial for the strategic plan committee to have been formed a few months ago. And inform, uh, you know, to, to help create that subzone map, but uh, that's kind of why the strategic plan is being formed so kind of. Quickly after the report, because it takes a while to get, you know, things going. Um, so the role I foresee for the relationship between these two committees is, you know, how, the planning board is an advisory board to the council, the strategic plan committee. And the planning board will be bouncing these ideas back and forth, you know how the planning board sees a lot of other issues? Well, the strategic planning committee would be solely focused on the village center, and while still the planning board sees all of the actions, oh, I don't, I don't wanna use the word actions, but. Um, kind of the, the results, that's a better word, of each of the previous village center plan, um, committee's meetings. Discusses the results of those um, discussions, and then kind of reports back to the, the, the committee. And each month, so we have this kind of two week, two week, um, you know, back and forth, and then that way we get a lot more done. Than if there was no committee and the planning board was tasked with creating this plan among everything else that the planning board is responsible for.
So, but who does their strategic planning board re- report to?
They, they still officially report to the council, um, but in practice, I see there is going to be a lot of back and forth between. The committee and the planning board in a way that the planning board would, um, kind of give their. Consideration of the results of the previous meeting to the committee at their next meeting. And also, there are three planning board members on this committee, um, so there's gonna be a lot of uh. Uh coherence between what the planning board is talking about in their meetings and what happens in the committee meetings.
So, who's on, who, who is on the strategic, who's the, who are the crossovers?
Yeah, um, Melinda, John, and Mike Lovell.
Okay.
And there's one uh, PR and G board member on the committee.
Sherry Albana, her name.
Yeah, but then, she's new uh, to the PR and G board as well, but then there's a couple of residents at large. And then there are a couple of property owners, so getting all of these people at the table in a, in a, kind of a committee where. It's, in the planning board, you all have been on the planning board for a long time, and I mean, you're still residents of Marvin, but then to have another. You know, group where property owners and other residents at large and, and other boards, uh, PRG board member. All have like an equal voice at a table, um, is really important to creating this uh, this diversity. Of opinions so that we can converge on something that is reasonable for all parties. That's kind of the purpose and the distinction of the committee versus the planning board, does that make sense?
I mean, it, it does, I still think the rules are, it's convoluted, like I don't.
I think it.
I don't want clarification around it, but does the strategic planning board, do they take an oath, are they bound by the same rules that we are, like?
Um, that's kind of a question for Austin, we just had a website committee go through a few meetings and then disband, so, did they have to take oaths, I mean?
They were not, they were not sworn in, they don't have established, some committees don't have established rules of procedure. Uh, unless council mandates that to happen, so as of now, this committee will not have established rules of procedure. It, there, it's, there's much less, it's much less formal.
Right, but it's also, it's also fair that both the, the planning board will have monthly, um, oversight of this committee and the council will also, you know. Way in on the final product, like the website committee's goal was to con- uh, communicate with the contractor, the consultant that we have.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, give their revisions month after month until they came up with the final product, and then that final product will be finally reviewed by council. So, the committee, although they maybe take several sub step actions, nothing that they do is. A determination or a final product, it's council that decides it.
Rowan. You may want to ask council to establish a hierarchy, what is formalized, if you want the planning board to have oversight, I would rec- I would recommend asking council to establish that hierarchy.
That's a good point, do you, do you guys want to have that official like, kind of oversight of the committee?
I, I'm very comfortable with, with people that aren't your oath, that, you know, not that they're, I don't know, I mean, you know, obviously I trust our planning board members, but. But I don't know where people's, um, what people's intentions are on this committee, and I don't even know who else is on the committee, so I'm attacking anyone's character, don't get there. But like, they're studying this, we, you know, there is a, we have a lot at stake here, and just the, that multiple people are giving their ideas to the council, like it's gonna be really messy. And there does need to be some control over, you know, if they're going, if the committee's going exploring and coming up with stuff, that's great. We can't both be talking to the council.
Kelly, if, if I may, uh, the, the members of this committee, they do sign the same ethics forms that you all do, so they do subscribe to, they are restricted by the same um, regulations that you all are. So, if they do anything unethical, they can and would be removed. If uh, if, if they, if they lied on their statement of economic interest forms, you know, that's also grounds for removal. Um, I don't see why we can't swear them in, as long as if the next, if, like, we could bring it to council, see if they want us to swear them in, I, we can, we can write an oath.
But I don't even see like the need for that, because these meetings will be public, um, there are several planning board members on the committee, and so. What, I mean, what's the worst that could happen by members of this, you know, district being on the committee, they will ask for more. Than what the district should have, than everyone else, when majority of, there's not a majority of people who own, own property in this district, they are a minority in total. So, then the other members would, you know, tone them down a bit, and then you would end up converging on something that is, you know.
But if, you know, if, if you go into that extent, then the council would have to adopt some ordinances.
They could, they, they could adopt, rules of procedure, they, it could be simple if they wanted to, I will say that we are starting to drift off topic, and if we continue down this road, we'll need to amend the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that is a good point.
Good point.
Uh, cause we're still in the motion to table this.
The mo- the motion, that motion I thought passed already, did it not, did we not vote on that?
No, there was no vote, we're still in the discussion of the motion to table item notified.
Let's go ahead and take that vote, if, so we can do.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I guess before we, before we go, I do wanna say to Kelly that. Yeah, I guess before we, before we go, I do wanna say to Kelly that I think it will make a lot more sense when the committee starts meeting.
Um, so just, just, just to recap, Kelly, you made the motion to table this item until the next planning board meeting, Melinda, you seconded.
All right, call in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right.
Kent?
Kent?
Aye.
Motion.
Uh, I'm gonna have to ask for a very brief recess.
You want five minutes?
Yeah, five minutes. Huh? Make motion for a five minute recess.
Yeah, my refrigerator is calling, so yes, I'm going to John.
Okay.
So that's the second.
All right, over. Yep.
Aye.
All right, all right.
Okay.
Uh, I'll, uh, reconvene this many, the, the meeting. Looks like we have everybody back.
Kent, is Kent back?
Kent, are you there?
Sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item, discussion of the zoning district types for the village center.
All right.
Heritage district.
Uh, let's start calling it that after council.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so like I said last time, this is something I put together, um, mostly because Kelly had asked a lot of questions, but there were good questions, some of the planning board members had same questions. Uh, how do we regulate certain things, uh, what kinds of districts, uh, what kind of, uh, zoning district types, uh, are there and what do they, you know, what do they have in comparison to each other? So I put together both, uh, sample zoning districts of each of the, of four types that identified. It could be, uh, pros and cons of each and obviously a score that ranks each of the four types and shows which one I think is the best. Um, and, uh, the, I guess the, the main topic is that the overlay district versus the conventional district with, uh, village center uses being conditional. Um, the one main difference is that an overlay district also allows everything that is allowed in the underlying district, whereas a conventional district with village center uses being conditional could draw some uses, picking and choosing, saying, okay, these residential uses are by right. And if you wanna do anything that we determined that was, uh, appropriate for the village center, you have to apply for a conditional use, uh, permit. Uh, that way you put every, uh, you know, development proposal through the planning board and the council. Um, and that's, that's basically all I had to say about it. Um, did everyone look through that memo and see, um, you know, just kind of like form an opinion on, uh, the, you know, table the, the example districts?
Well, um.
Good job, Rohit. I, I just wanna, um, thank you for this, this was really, really helpful. So thanks.
My pleasure.
But the, if we went with the one conventional district, yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I, I think I understand the overlay. An overlay district is basically, we have what we have here already and then we, we, we drew a bubble over top of this and say, in addition to the fact that it's already residential.
Yeah, our zone.
Our zone.
Yeah.
You know, which wouldn't be changing any of that, you know, but we've got potential to do these other things on conditional use. Now, a conventional district with a village center uses conditional, I'm, I'm a bit, how would that be different than, than?
The overlay district?
Yeah, I'm, no, no, yeah, then, then the overlay. I understand overlay part, but, uh.
Okay, so in the memo option two, where you see permitted uses and I put permitted uses, one, single family du- dwellings and subdivisions as permitted by our Marvin residential zoning. That is one out of fourteen different things that are permitted by right in the residential zoning. Other things that are permitted by right in residential zoning are a daycare, uh, family care of up to six, uh, people, horse riding academy, um, a school, uh. So, those are the things that you would not include in the village center zoning district.
Okay.
Because you don't, you, you wanna have a little tighter grip on what is permitted and some of the things that are permitted in our residential zoning are a bit over, um, what we were thinking of, um, allowing for the village center district.
Okay, that, that, I think that answers, broadly answers that question for me, okay. Any other questions or comments? From anybody else?
I, I think I understand what you just said. I was actually looking at the front page though, when he was explaining it, so, um.
Okay, so option two, one conventional district with VCD uses permitted by conditional use permit. That is the page I was looking at. So, um, and what that means is, as you were saying, um, kind of one of the precedents of why I put this together was, what if we want to allow people to do some of the, you know, residential development that you could allow? Well, that could be allowed in the permitted uses section of this district. And under conditional uses, you have all the village center uses, I have here restaurant, retail office, public park. And then it would specifically say approved based on consistency with the village center's strategic plan so that the planning board and the council, when it comes time to reviewing site plans, can look at the strategic plan and say, all right, this is what we were thinking about, go ahead or not. Um, and both the planning, or just like we had those two pools today, um, except on a much more, uh, you know, uh, kind of meticulous, uh, review. Uh, you look at the, the site plan, council looks at the site plan and then they go ahead, as opposed to permitted uses, which could just go through staff and then be allowed. And that would only be, the, the only permitted use in that district would be single family dwellings and subdivision that are already permitted under the residential zoning.
But, but then that would be negating those other permitted uses.
Right, and nobody would actually apply for that, because that's not the point.
I mean, you know, the, the daycare, the, the, the schools, the, you know.
Right. Right, that would omit the ability for people to apply for the other permitted uses in the R zoning, which are the daycare and the, um, you know, all, all the other things.
Okay.
There are fourteen things and I don't remember, but they're not things that we probably, probably things that we don't want in this district.
Okay, I.
Um, so, I mean, that's, that's what I prefer, because I looked at the pros and cons and realized that it's a really good way to keep, uh, keep everything fair and under control, but also having a good amount of review by both the planning board and council. So, I mean, I don't really think there needs to be a motion at this time because the type of zoning district is on a timeline for, uh, November in the strategic plan, so we'll be seeing this again later.
And this, these are big con- big concepts, so they're like pieces of the work.
Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's what I said, that's a, it's a big, that's a big concept. You know, and I was having, you know, up until you explained it, I was having trouble understanding the, the real difference between the two.
So, so Rohit, when, and when they discuss it in the strategic committee, it seems like a decision the planning board should make as to which kind of district it should be.
Yeah, and you can make that decision before or after that meeting, but the strategic planning committee, again, it is a committee, so everything that they come up with in that committee would be subject to the review of you and council. And then up to you to make the, you know, decisions on things.
Yeah, and, and.
Especially at least that was the hierarchy.
You know, if, if the strategic committee, you know, let's say they make a recommendation to the council, Bob, you know, for whatever, you know, I, we think we'll be zoned this way or whatever we will come, they, that they come up with. I can envision the council saying, all right, that may have merit, we'd ask the planning board to then
Yeah.
review that, maybe.
Yeah, much like.
Yeah, that just seems like a waste of time though, like.
Yeah, but, but.
People in strategic combination should, you know what I mean? Like if you're the boss, I don't want one of my staff to tell me one thing and the other one of my staff and then I can't have to go back away and decide, you know, talk it out. Like I want them to be on the same page, then bring me.
Yeah.
Like the final decision, so.
Then the other way we.
That's my issue with like, we shouldn't be going to them with, with multiple opinions.
Right, and I, and I think the idea of a hierarchy makes a lot of sense, um, we.
Where they would address the planning board and that would probably go up.
Yeah, they address the planning board and the planning board reports to the council. We could bring that up at the work session, we still have time for that, if, I mean.
We, yeah, we can always, we can always ask the council to amend the agenda, so yeah, but it's something that we consider. We do have, I mean, we have discussed some changes to basically the structure of that committee that could be, that could be important for making it effective, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so we could bring that to the council, um, and so that you would be the kind of oversight of the committee. But again, we're kind of going off topic, but, um, the, there are a couple of ways we could address this. I mean, some of the things that the village center committee are going to be talked about are already kind of, uh, set in advance. Like obviously the committee is not starting from scratch with a lot of different issues. The boundary has been discussed in planning board, um, the kind of distribution of uses, uh, residential versus commercial. Um, so this is, could be another thing where you go into the committee already saying, we should do it, we should do this type of district and that is what the planning board, um, you know, we, we could already start filling in the type of district that the planning board chooses with the, uh, you know, the language that comes out of the committee, if you wanna go about it that way.
Cause I mean, if we're gonna be affirming the CUP's, like, I would rather, I would rather the planning board have control over what kind of district it is. Like, we're the ones that are gonna end up having to approve the applications.
My, my advice would be to keep the strategic planning committee. I'm, I'm just gonna back the hierarchy, or is, that way you don't get, you're not gonna have multiple voices.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, so do you guys want to maybe, maybe not decide today again, cause we have a few people missing today?
Yeah.
Kinda look at this, kinda think about what you want and then maybe make a, uh, vote to recommend a di- a specific type of zoning district so that when the, the committee starts talking, and so you make that vote in October and so I have it on the calendar for the committee to start talking about that in November, they're already going with one of these options.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but what is everybody, what's the, what's the feeler right now? Is, is, who's leaning towards conventional and who's leaning towards, um, overlay?
Well, yeah, ba- based on, you know, Rohit's, you know, clarification for me, cause I, I was having, as I said, having trouble get my arms around it. Now, the, the one conventional district, whatever name it is, with the, uh, commercial, you know, village center uses being conditional, that makes to me now, you know, pretty decent sense.
Yeah, I agree. Melinda? Or Kent? Sorry, I, I keep, I keep reading them and Rohit, I genuinely appreciate the clarification, um. They're really close. Uh, you know, and I don't know that I feel negatively about us jumping through an additional hoop. I don't think I want anything to be like overtly hard and I definitely don't want anything to be unfair to property owners and stuff. But I also feel like if we have to work a little bit, and I know that, that's what we're doing, right? We're obviously like dyeing all our eyes, crossing teeth, that sort of thing. I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not against doing a little bit of work to make sure that we're good, that everything is done the right way. Where I don't want everything, I don't, I definitely don't want this to be too easy to where people, I don't know, don't throw up the examples that everybody was, you know. I'm deciding, Kelly. Sorry, was that a really long answer? I'm thinking.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and I also, that's what I, that's why I put ease of developing by owner and also ability to village, of village to regulate development are two different, you know, categories that I included in the score. Because, uh, I think a conditional district would be too hard, it would be too much oversight because in that scenario, it's number three, the property owners would have to have a site plan before they even get the rezoning to this district, which is completely unfair. Um, because they don't have that guarantee, they don't have the confidence that they will even be allowed to be a village center property until they already create a site plan and who knows, you know, what the council will, you know, have to negotiate to get them approved. Whereas if they're rezoned to village center, but they still can't do anything until they submit a conditional use permit, it's kind of just the right amount of, um, kind of confidence by the owners, but also oversight by the village. That's why I rated that one the highest.
And, and that, that still gives us a lot of oversight.
Yeah, and then option one is too little oversight by us, because if you allow the village center uses to be by right, then only staff ever looks at an application and then, I mean, I can't, I mean, maybe I'll be here in five years, maybe I won't, who knows, we'll be staff, right? So only having staff have oversight is a very bad idea, in my opinion. And that's also why I rated that one lower.
Yeah.
Does that make sense to everyone?
And.
Yeah.
I don't know, or, I don't, are we in, are we in a position for entertaining motions or voting?
I would recommend to vote on that at the next meeting.
I, I was.
With a fuller board.
Yeah, just to table this for now.
Yeah, uh. And, yeah, that's it, you know, that was probably what I saw, the, the most difficult item on the agenda. And, and I think maybe we've not had a whole lot of conversation, because it is difficult and it's not really, we still haven't grasped it very well.
Right, it's been something that's been conceptually tossed around for a very long time.
Yeah.
And it's just as of last meeting that I, you know, I put together and what it actually means and examples of the things that we've been talking about for a while.
And, and we really need it.
Uh, so I don't mind if you don't vote now.
We, we, we really need the input of our wordsmith.
Yeah.
Who's your wordsmith?
Paul.
Paul.
It's fine, it's fine, I, I would.
No, I, he, I, I appreciate everything he does, he.
Hey Rohit, can I ask one question about the, um, conventional district?
Sure.
Um, it says that it, the property will be rezoned by the village, so everything in the con- in the con- in the conventional district no longer keeps their original zoning, it has this new zoning.
Yes.
Um, so would it be VCD zoning, but in order to do anything in the VCD, they have to do a CUP? And if they won't stay residential, they just, they just don't do anything?
Um, yeah, that's right, that's exactly right. Um, in, in rezoning to conventional district, either the property owner or the village or the gov- the government can rezone a property. And so in this case, village would rezone all fifteen properties and they would not be any, able to do anything more than single family dwellings unless they apply for a conditional use permit, which starts the process of the village center uses.
Last question.
Sure.
Wait, if there's an existing residential home that ends up getting a VCD, um, zoning, um, allocation or whatever, um, will they then be subjected to the tax, the tax rate?
Those are two, yeah, those are a com- two completely, I mean, separate conversations, but having to do with the same properties. When you rezone a property, it has nothing to do with that tax district and we are looking into either deferring or exempting the people who currently live in their houses, don't wanna do anything. So the district zoning is just a zoning, it's what they're allowed to do with their property. The municipal service district, it also has a boundary that we establish in a council level and a completely different conversation. We may just simply exclude those properties for ease of, you know, working with them and then in a later fiscal year, just add them when they're ready to develop. That might, that might just be the move, um, you know, just to make it easy on everyone. Um, but they're completely separate conversations.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's helpful.
All right, uh, sort of an additional thought that popped in my mind.
We'll need a motion to table this item.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you don't have to make that motion until you have a conversation.
Oh, yeah, I'm just saying, I'm reminding you, you'll need a motion for that.
There's no motion on the table right now.
Assuming, assuming, you know, cause none of this is done. Assuming that we go with a one conventional district with the village center uses being conditional, all right? And the only permitted use would be single family dwellings and subdivisions. Okay, I've already answered my question. How would that fit in, or how would a conservation district around the.
That would be a conditional use.
That would be a conditional use, okay, all right. I, I said, I, I reached back down and I reread it or saw it and this is answering my own question.
Yep. Yep. Everything more or different than what would be allowed in the R zoning would be a conditional use.
Okay.
Even the residential concepts of the village center, you know, residential.
So if, if, uh, Russell Bell wanted to continue forward with his eight lots or nine lots.
Yeah, he could just do that.
And then, then, then that would be on permitted use.
Yep.
As it was.
Yep.
Want to change anything else, then it's conditional.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Uh. A motion to table this till the next meeting?
We don't need one, right?
Yeah, yeah, we, we have to.
We don't need this.
To, to table it, we do, until the next meeting, I think.
I thought it was, we were gonna vote, can we just add it to the agenda as a, can we do this as an action item?
Yeah, I suppose, like, to.
The, the guy who keeps me straight.
Yeah, we could re, we could make it a new agenda item to discussion of choosing a zoning type or something.
Okay.
All right, that makes it on the next meeting.
Just, just move on to the next item here.
Okay. Next item.
Definitely we did discuss it.
Yep, this item is complete. All right, let me pull this up in advance. I think I'll have to pull up that script.
So you all, that will choo- you all choose a district at the next meeting?
Yes, hopefully. Well, it's on the agenda for the next meeting, as far as we know right now.
What's the date of the next planning board? Is it October thirteenth?
No, that's the, uh, council.
That's council on October twentieth.
Yeah. All right, so I put this up on the next, uh, actually, I need you to say that we're on the next item.
Oh, yeah, I did, I thought. Yeah, next item is discussion of the detailed village center timeline.
Awesome. All right, so I put this, I put this up on the screen, and it's also in your packet, but I put it up on the screen because it's kind of small in the packet. Um, here, very, oh, you, you, you've got the, the little side.
That's it, and that's compared to, to our one from several weeks ago.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so what this is meant to do, is meant to show, you know, you, the council, everyone, that, uh, we have kind of a flow chart of, if, you know, if this district is to happen. The council has not officially, you know, given a vote of yes or no, if we are doing the district, because it's very important that we study certain things and make sure this is feasible based on the low density. You know, people, you know, the, the CPNI people said, that's kind of a oxymoron, you know, low density downtown. So the low density that Marvin wants, is it feasible? Will it fail? Will it succeed? We need someone to tell us that, and so before the council, uh, decides if the, the district is feasible, we're gonna hire an economic consultant. That's in the third category there. Um, but, uh, that's, that's the big thing, uh, I wanted to just talk about. I think this is more so of, uh, look at this at your own, uh, you know, speed and see, uh, you know, to see how this is going to progress.
Is this a proposed timeline?
This is a proposed timeline. Um, John and I and Christina have reviewed this, and, uh, we're about to propose it to the council at the work session. Uh, but again, this is kind of more so, you know, this item on the agenda of the planning board is more so for the planning board to get some eyes on it. Um, see what we're thinking about at a staff level on how, you know, like, a few meetings ago, I presented a timeline which was just four rows. It was, you know, landes plan, zoning district, um, municipal service district, and something else, I forget. Um, but it was just four rows and it was a general timeline. Now we have a much more specific timeline. How we make it happen, Christina says it's ambitious, but it's possible, and, uh, just wanted to see if you guys had any comments on it. And also, which, I, I showed which topics were gonna be discussed at which, uh, strategic plan committee meeting. So, um, that also answers one of those questions that was asked, um, asked a bunch by several planning board members.
Just curious, because you mentioned, you know, and of course, we've had these conversations, and, and I think you even had it at the village, at the town hall last night, made a comment about the economic feasibility study.
Yes.
Have you, or have we received, uh, proposals yet?
So, yeah, so I can, I can explain some. So one, the first line that says, bid for economic consultant or choose DFI. Um, the Development Finance Institute is based out of the School of Government at UNC Chapel Hill, and, uh, it's a state college. And, uh, the state says if we choose a state department to do, uh, consulting, we don't have to bid. And, uh, so we talked with them. Christina really likes them, uh, and, uh, we, uh, are in the process of, uh, seeing if we can, uh, draft up a contract to present it at the council meeting, uh, that's next week. If they can, uh, whip it up by the end of the week. Uh, so we don't have to bid for that, and, uh, that's what they do. Like, they, they do economic analysis. That's the whole institution, that's what they do.
So what, they will be looking at, you know, just for how much the village is going to invest to make this happen. Like, water lines or sewer lines.
Yeah, they'll look at all of that.
All that, and then here's the potential ta- tax benefits from it or something.
Yes, yes.
And here's the potential viability of two dozen or whatever small businesses being viable and staying in business and stuff?
Yes, all of that, yes. We discussed the scope, and they said, you know, we'll give you our full attention for six weeks. We'll do all of that ballpark estimates for, you know, how much the village could put into the common infrastructure versus how much the property owners would have to put in to their individual infrastructure and the tax benefit. And how we, the, the, the concept of how we pay that off over a twenty or thirty or fifty year, uh, time period. We, as a government, have a leverage of, you know, getting sub one percent interest rates on loans. We could do bonds. Whoever buys the bonds will, I'm sure, you know, get a good return on that, but, uh, that's what they will tell us for sure.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and once they submit that report, you know, they'll also attend the, uh, strategic plan committee. I told them when it is. They said we'll attend, and they'll give that report before Christmas. And then in January, the council will look at that report and decide if the village center district is something that we can go forward with officially.
Rohit, do you also take into consideration, so the one thing that I, I loved about the CNI report is that they, on some level, they didn't seem to have a really great idea of Marvin, right? Does this, and I know like they weren't here or whatever the case may be, but do, do, do these people then come in and understand, like, the third, like, the people that just drive through Marvin on their way to somewhere else versus, right? Like, one of the examples that they gave us in the CNI report was Valley Cruces. Right, and I know that we can't be Valley Cruces, but that Cruces is a destination people go there. We're kind of more like a Matthews and smaller, but people drive through us on their way to somewhere else. Does this take, do they do that, that kind of broad examination of like traffic and all of that? Or is it just what we have on paper, if they just use like static data, what? What is the scope?
Right, they, they'll look at the through traffic versus here traffic to determine what the market is for our, uh, commercial district, yes. Like, we'll have to work with them to give them the parameters, but they do look at everything.
Sure, I mean, I just think about like on our, on the perimeter of Marvin, right? The development that is taking place, especially right across the state line and things like that, that's also, that has to have a bearing. Like, I was thinking about, you know, on one hand, you were discussing, at some point, we mentioned that the, um, the higher density residential might be necessary in order to support a different. Um, and I think if we were, you know, out in the middle of life, maybe that might be the case, but I just wasn't sure about this. But did it, did it take into consideration Indian land and the Valentine area and people, you know, from Blakeney coming this way? You know, all of that. I was just curious.
I could definitely ask them about that when we talk to them, but, uh, it sounded like, when I, when I talked to them, that they do consider all the different, uh, like, development parameters in the area, and they are, they are familiar, they are based out of Chapel Hill, but they are familiar with the area. I think they did a project in Pineville, um, in Kannapolis, I think, or something, something in that, uh, upper area. So they, they are familiar with the Charlotte area. Their, their most recent projects were around here. And, um, I can make sure that they do consider that, but I did talk to them roughly about that, and they, they said they would consider through, through traffic versus, you know, Marvin area traffic and, um, and how that impacts the, you know, the economic viability. I, I made a note. I'll ask them for sure, that specific question.
Thank you.
It's just, uh. Um, another thing that I wanted to make clear through this timeline was that, um, with the town hall being one public input meeting, there would be several other opportunities for the public to directly provide input into the specifics of the village center, um, in the step two, where I've put the town hall and then three other, um, opportunities. I put public involvement meetings slash charrettes. There was, uh, there was a time, uh, several months ago, I was hoping to have a charrette in the March and April timeframe, and that never happened unfortunately. But, uh, now that we're kind of getting a grasp on what is possible virtually, um, and maybe, you know, this will blow over by early next year, in, in any case, I think we would be in a position to have a charrette, um, and a couple of public input meetings on the specifics of village center. Um, and they are listed in December, February, and April.
It's gonna be interesting if we get any sort of additional public participation.
I would love to see it, you know.
Yeah, more, more so than, than the town hall.
Oh, the town hall was great.
Actually, did, did you take account?
I mean, there were about twenty to thirty people there.
That's what I was thinking.
Physically, and then there were another about fifteen to twenty virtually. So total about forty people. It was a good turnout.
We topped out around forty-five, roughly.
Yeah.
All right, well, good. Between the two.
Yeah, yeah.
Between this one and that.
We had a lot of questions come in through the chat.
Uh-huh.
We alternated chat question, floor question, and we, we got, we got through it all. It was, it was pretty good. But that's, that's kind of getting, um, a little off topic.
Yeah, I know, but, but, no, not really, because, you know, it's, you know, indicative of what these public involved meetings.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
That's just, that was the purpose.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I guess the purpose is to show that we are capable of having a hybrid virtual and in-person meeting if, uh, if need be, to have a, um, complete public input that we want for this village center.
Yeah.
Hey Rohit?
Yes.
Uh, I'm sorry, I can, what does MSD stand for? I cannot.
Uh, yeah, sorry. Um, I'll make a note of that in the timeline. MSD is the Municipal Service District, and that is the special taxing boundary.
Yeah, okay, that's cool. Okay.
Yeah.
You. It's funny that I asked a question about that exact same.
Yeah. That's fine, that's fine. No, you're, you're right. I'm, I, 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 I should not, I should know this. I should not put any acronyms without defining them in these things that are supposed to be public. You're right.
It's very easy to do that.
Yes, yeah.
Don't beat yourself up too much.
I know, I know. It's fine.
It, it's you, you know, typical government.
Yeah, you get in the role, you forget that, you know, people don't know everything, like, all the specific terms.
Yeah. Uh, is, is, I guess it's, other than conversation, there's not a need for.
Yeah, there's nothing to take action on. Um, it just, and also to show that we started coming up with this, uh, about two months ago, and we're currently on track. I mean, pl- planning board deliberation of landes plan to conclude in September, public involvement meeting happened, uh, final version to council, council review, um, next month, and, yeah, appointed facilitator to the, and members in September. Um, have the town hall, bid for economic consultant or choose DFI. Everything that we are, we said we would do up till September has happened or will happen. So it's good to know that we're kind of still on track, even though it's still the beginning. We'll see what happens. It's gonna get really hectic.
Yeah.
But it's gonna be exciting. Like, uh, Christina said, ambitious but possible.
And this brought up another que- I'm, I'm backtracking on the agenda, but establishing the zoning district and we don't have to write it.
No, I'm hiring a consultant for that.
We, we, we did. Yeah.
We're gonna come up with all the content through the process of, you know, the strategic plan and planning board back and forth. But they will also be there in some of the later meetings to kind of, uh, synthesize what we're saying and come up with a district language that is, you know, legally, you know, actually what we're talking about.
And, and maybe sort of guide us in the correct direction and coming up with some of this stuff, so that we are.
Yeah, yeah. Just to make sure we're not doing anything, we're not proposing anything illegal also by accident.
Yeah.
And, uh, to make sure that, uh, the final product, the zoning district itself, is exactly what we want and doesn't accidentally allow anything we don't want.
Mm-hmm.
Because I, I, again, I don't have the confidence that I'll be able to do that myself.
Yeah, like I said, it's backtracking a little, but it.
I mean, everything's on the table now.
It's crawled up here on the timeline.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think it's backtracking, because everything's on the timeline, so you could probably talk about anything and it would be relevant.
Okay. Any other observations or comments? Having none. Uh, action items.
Okay, I don't have that many. Rohit, I'm sure you'll be able to add to mine. Um, so we will look into the roles and responsibilities of the village center district strategic plan committee.
Mm-hmm.
We will, let's see, contact the absent planning board members to see if they have additional comment.
Yeah.
And we'll add choosing the zoning type to the next planning board meeting agenda. And do what do you, do you have anything else, Rohit?
Um, just make sure DFI, uh, can address the question that Melinda asked about, uh.
And you had that written on your notes?
Yeah, it said asked about, uh, internal versus external, um, market factors and, and in the district.
Short, shorthand that.
Um, ask DFI a question about market factors.
That all you have?
Yeah.
Well, we have to, we have, I cracked again, information they need. But we, they need to ask us, I mean, the square feet of commercial.
Yes, yes. In the first week of them, uh, being involved with us, they said they will be giving us all the questions that they need to ask us in order for them to come up with the models that they do.
Okay, and so that will probably come up to us.
Yeah, sometime in the next few weeks.
Next meeting, next meeting or something?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Let's give the consultant the parameters, October.
Okay. Yep, so, so that will be on the.
Yeah, the October.
We always pencil it in on the October agenda.
Yeah, um, let's just call him consultant for now, because we don't know if it's gonna be DFI, but, um, give the cons- give the consultant the parameters or discuss, or discuss the parameters for the, whatever, however you want worded, but that should be on the next agenda.
Shorthanded.
Discuss, discuss VCD parameters.
Parameters in what regard? Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
For the, uh, economic consultant.
Yeah. Discuss VCD parameters for economic consultant.
Something like that. We'll probably, it's enough for now. That's good, keeping us on track. Make sure we don't fall behind in October already.
Is that all of it?
I guess all I got.
All right. For member comments, um, I'm gonna start. Uh, didn't write anything down. I saw some, some ma- potentially major, not obstacles, but discussion items. And I think that, you know, would've been nice if we'd had the full board here. I think we'd had, we'd moved things along a little faster, but I think we did a good job. And I'm feeling happier every month than I was two years ago or something.
Tell that beer, John.
Uh, yeah.
All the virtual meetings that you couldn't turn that on.
Go pass one on the record, please.
Kelly, any comment?
Um, I will, uh, just say I, I just really appreciate all the, um, work that, uh, Rohit does, my opposite on questions. Um, I was impressed with the, um, with the zo-. My onsite questions, um, I was impressed with the, um, with the zip, with the districting, uh, piece he put together. And if I could just ask a favor, um, because I know that, um, the new clerk doesn't know me very well, but, um, if we could get as much into one email as possible, that would be really, really helpful. Um, I, I have a hard time with multiple emails, and I guess Rohit, most of those were coming from you. Sent us, like, sixteen within the last, like, week and a half.
Yeah, there was, sorry.
And it came, actually yelling at you.
Yeah, no, I, I do, I do hear what you're saying, and, and, uh, there's a lot of CUPs, a lot of different things going on at the same time. And, uh, I recognize that you, we should definitely try to consolidate that into one email, so.
But, you know, the, part of that, though, is the time, time requirements.
Yeah.
Ahead of the hearing.
Right, right, everything, right, everything that needs to be submitted fifteen days in advance, you'll get it fifteen days before the meeting, and then the rest of the agenda should come about a week before the meeting. But then, we should try to keep it at a staff level, try to keep it within only those two emails, basically. Anything fifteen days before and then the rest of the agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, so legally you had to send those to us fifteen days prior?
Yes, yes. That's our own ordinance.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. We, we, we stubbed our toe previously for that reason, I think.
Right, right, the, uh-
Okay. I, I get it. Just, just FYI, um, I don't think any of you in the room have school-based children at this point, but, um, those of us who are parents are receiving eight thousand emails from teachers in the school every day, so we miss email, you're gonna need to text us, because we're buried in emails right now, on top of, like, our actual jobs if we were. So, um, just FYI, I'm not bitter.
All right, and I'm, I'm going around just as I see the names on the, on my screen, or the, the screen. Kent, any, uh, comments? Uh, all I can hear is a muffled, uh-
Yeah, could you, could you speak into the mic if you're saying something right now?
Yeah, I am speaking. Can you hear me, Rohit?
Yes, yes, that's good, that's good, yes.
Yeah, no, I'm, um, obviously, uh, I'm interested to see how the strategic planning committee, you know, interacts with, uh, the planning board and with, uh, council. I think that'll, that'll be interesting in terms of how it impacts the timeline that you lay out. Um, other than that, I enjoy digging into the landy's plan and, you know, starting to learn, and it's like I've got a lot to learn, uh, a couple of months, but it's been a good process.
Yeah, you've got a lot of catching up. Some of us have been reading it and rereading it for two years. Or you-
Yes.
Or more.
Yeah. Uh, Melinda?
Um, no, I will say thank you all for, um, working with me as I try to learn some of this and catching up. And, um, Rohit, I think that your patience with, um, all of us, including the people that impressed us last night and just all of that, I'm just incredibly impressed, very impressed with your patience. So thank you much, and, um, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Good.
Uh, thanks a lot, everybody. Good meeting, and-
Give, um, give Bob a chance.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, our, our council liaison, Mr. Robert Marklees, do you have any comment? If you unmute yourself.
No, I think, uh, all of you are, uh, you know, you're doing a good job. You have an undomine task ahead of you, uh, digging through, as, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of soil to sow here between now and June. Um, and Rohit, I appreciate you putting the timeline on. That's very, very helpful. I mean, that's, but there's so much going on right now, uh, from the location of where Village Hall is actually going to go, um, what commercial property might be involved with that, um, possibly. Um, there's, um, uh, you know, regarding the naming of the district, um, you know, that's kind of a, of, of, of a, um, issue that I'm glad that you're discussing, you know, what would be the right name, that sort of thing. Uh, I will be proposing the name of the heritage district, because a sprig district has been overused uh, by a lot of main streets and small community surround. Um, but, uh, you know, district is a, this is a different word for district, but, you know, we kind of, the way it was defined was when we thought about the heritage district, we thought about it from a standpoint, the word itself guided the kind of businesses and commercial businesses that were going to go in. It had to be of a heritage. It had to be historic. It had to be, um, you know, and I know the council's talked about this. I mean, we've talked about, you know, the architecture. I mean, we're way ahead of that, but, um, and, you know, that, so it's, it's, we've got a lot of work to do. Um, and, you know, there are a lot of charrettes. I, I will tell you that the town hall meeting, the way it was conducted, and everything we did yesterday, um, is going to be the beginning. So, um, what we learned from it, how we learned from it, will be, we can continue more of those. The public, you know, it's, it's not just considering, it's what it is, it's reality, but the, the public really, with the coffee and councils that have been in, um, the public really doesn't, isn't in touch like we are. They just don't know, you know? And, and, uh, we're doing a great job with emails and informing the public, um, but they just don't know a lot. There's a lot of rumor that just kind of floats around, uh, as to what's going on, what's happening, what are you guys thinking of? And there's a lot going on. It's a lot pieces. So I appreciate everybody's patience and the good job that, uh, planning board is doing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, entertain a motion to, uh, adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
He took credit.
Awesome.